Gina.
I can now hear you.
Martha.
Thank.
Courtney, did you have a comment relative to 101? Okay, I see your hand went down. All right, guys, thank you so much for your patience. We'll get, we'll go ahead and start over from the beginning.
So she can hear it. Okay, so take two.
So, um, good afternoon. My name is Emily D'Angelo and I am the board's administrator. And this is a public hearing related to the notice of intent published in the Louisiana Register on January 20th, 2025. Here with me today is the board's legal counsel, Sherry Morris, and she is going to go over how the public hearing will be conducted.
Okay, as Emily said, this is not a board meeting. This is a public hearing directed at the rules. We received a number of comments in writing prior to this meeting, and we're going to go through and announce those comments and accept additional comments. If you want to make a comment, use the raise hand feature, which will be monitored, and we'll get to you. We're going to start with chapter one at the first section and go through to the end. I think we may have a number of people that want to make comments. So to enable us to get through everybody's comments to two minutes and not be repetitive. So in reviewing the comments that were written, we received a lot of information about questions about how the software will adapt to this, how the board's procedures will be. Those are things that we're not going to address today. Those can be addressed at a later time. So, but what the purpose of this meeting is, is to get the comments to make sure that the language of the rules is corrected if it needs to be. We don't have any authority to make any changes. What we will do is gather all the information today and report it to the board if there are provisions that need amendment or revision. So there will be a presentation to the board of anything where there is a need to adjust any language. So we're going to start with chapter one. Section 101, we had no written public comments. So we're going to ask, does anybody have a comment they'd like to make about section 101? And no comment. So then we'll go on to 111. And we did receive written comments about 111.
Yes. All right, so we received written comments from Tracy Lilly, Paula Davis, Sarah Backstrom, Elizabeth Rutan, Sarah Bankston, Leslie Green, Tamika Boyer, Asia Dejas, I'm sure I didn't pronounce that correctly, Rebecca Spears, and Denise Chassot. This was, these were not separate comments. This was provided in one piece of correspondence. And I will read the portion of 111. 111, uh, four, supportive of field supervisors documenting their supervisory oversight when co-signing records. Is there any other public comment regarding 111 subsection G4?
Deb Henson has her hand raised.
The, uh,
what the comment was about? Oh, she submitted a written comment.
Yeah. But it's not about the language of the rule.
Okay, and maybe just say you received a comment from Deb Henson.
She's got her hand raised. I didn't, I didn't bring 111 in here.
Maybe just let her say.
Okay.
Deb? I'm clicking on her.
What are the comments?
The comment was about a word that was left off in the explanation of the rule and a recommendation of something to consider in the future.
Okay.
Deb, can you hear us?
So we need to re-advice everybody what the comment was.
No, I'm clicking on her, but I'm not hearing anything from her.
Ms. Henson, we can't hear you if you want to make a comment. She still has her hand raised.
Yeah, it's still raised, and she's showing on the screen.
And she write it in the chat? Does that work? Ms. Henson, we can't hear you. We see that your hand is still raised. If you want to make a comment, you can write it in the chat and it could be read.
She said, can you read my comment? Yes.
She said the chat is disabled, Dr. McKey, but.
Somebody else put they seem, I can't seem to use my audio. She says she'll try to get our audio fixed.
Okay. Do you want to maybe just go over what the comment was?
Excuse me, one minute. Okay, Deb Henson. Section 111 is amended to clarify that the informed consent to provide services must be documented to clarify that a social worker is from accessing records of any individual they are not treating without a legitimate purpose and to clarify the requirements that social workers supervising students must indicate their supervisory function when co-signing records. I think the above highlighted text is missing the word prohibited. So it would say to clarify that a social worker is prohibited from accessing records of any individual they are not treating. The other portion of Ms. Henson's submission is a recommendation which will be provided to the board for future consideration.
All right. Any other comments on 111?
There are no other hands. Oh, Kim? Well, hold on. Went up and went down. No, there's no other hands raised.
So go on to 113.
113, we received a comment in the group submission submitted by Tracy Lilly, Paula Davis, Sarah Backstrom, Elizabeth Rutan, Sarah Bankston, Leslie Green, Tamika Boyer, Asia Dejas, Rebecca Spears, Denise Chassot. Related to subsection B2, the commenters are concerned that the rule is unclear on how the board will determine if a reasonable social worker would conclude.
Are there any additional comments?
There's no hands raised.
Okay. So section 117 on pub, on conduct. It's my understanding that one was already published, right?
Yeah, so we didn't receive any public comment or any written public comment on 117. It was included in the notice of intent. However, this was already promulgated as a rule and is effective back November of 2024. And this changed the timeframe to report an arrest from seven days to 30 days.
So we're going to skip over that with that explanation since it'll be taken out of this promulgation. The next section with an amendment is 125, social work educators.
Okay, we had several submissions of written comments to section 125. So subsection A, we had comments from Bobby Roberts and Sherry Duffy. And so some of these comments are a little long, so bear with me. They're written public comment to 125 subsection C. The relationship of a social work educator to their students is comparable to that of a social worker to their client. They are requesting that the first statement be omitted. We have been in social work education for 14 years and 19 years respectfully, and strongly disagree with the wording that this relationship is comparable to that of a social worker to their client. However, we do not disagree and are in support of the remainder of this paragraph, which very closely resembles the wording in the Code of Ethics. We also support sections A, B, and D. Reasons why this is not comparable to a client. Social work educators form appropriate mentoring relationships with students outside of class that may involve social activities which are encouraged and even expected by the university. Some of these include meals at the homes of educators or in restaurants or coffee shops, typically in groups, attending sporting or school events that involve students, working in volunteer activities, and service learning projects alongside students. Contrast, we would never have a client over to our home or engage with them at any social activity outside of the therapeutic setting. Once a client, always a client. This prudent practice is in no way comparable to how social work educators interact with students who have graduated from their programs. Social work educators become colleagues and friends of their former students, often working alongside them, whether in the clinical setting or even in the educational setting. Many of our students become field supervisors for our program, our supervisees for licensure, and many also become our friends. We would never befriend a client even after completion of services and would avoid all dual relationships such as the ones listed above. I agree that we should maintain clear, appropriate boundaries so as not to exploit our students. Therefore, I do not engage in friendship relationships with current students. However, to say that the relationship should be comparable to that of a client would eliminate any of the above interactions with current or former students that are completely appropriate and healthy.
Do we have any additional comments on 125, sections A through C?
There are no hands raised.
Okay.
There's, um, that was actually, I'm so sorry. That was, what I read was 125C for, from Bobby Roberts and Sherry Duffy. But subsection C, the same concern was submitted by others. The group that was submitted by Tracy Lilly also had a concern with that particular portion. Tracy Lilly says, strong opposition to the inclusion of verbiage, the relationship of a social work educator to their student is comparable to that of a social worker to their client. They, they support deleting the first sentence that, that is, creates great concern in using the remaining presented language. Social workers who function as educators or field instructors for students should not engage in any dual or multiple relationships with students during tenure of supervision relationship in which there is a risk of exploitation or potential harm to the student, including dual relationships that may arise while using social networking sites or other electronic media. Social work educators and field instructors are responsible for setting clear, appropriate, and culturally sensitive boundaries. Reason of concern and recommendation for deleting the first sentence. The professional relationship with a client is a completely different relationship in scope of practice and purpose than supervising a student in a field placement and/or licensure. The role is to educate, not provide services, treatment, or interventions. The role is defined by the tenure of the supervisory relationship, not post-completing of supervision. Many supervisees will become colleagues and interact professionally and/or socially with past supervisors, which is a completely different expectation and role than with clients. Students prepare student and or licensee for social work practice, not address their personal and/or mental health needs. If the first line is deleted, it would seem to, to help define the intent of the rule, which is maintaining professional boundaries during the tenure of the supervisory relationship. This clarification would provide clarity to students, supervisees, and supervisors, which is best supporting the proposed language in 125D.
That's okay, very good. That covers all of it.
It doesn't. There's also comments to other subsections and and accidentally jumped ahead. I need to back up. Did we say, did we talk about 113?
Yes, I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, if a reasonable social worker, yes, we did.
Okay.
So do we have anything?
So 125A, a social work educator's purpose is to educate social work students by various means, in person or remotely, including but not limited to classwork, lectures, fieldwork, and mentorship. And Bobby Roberts and Sherry Duffy had, that was part, their support of that language was part of their public comment. Subsection B, social work educators shall provide instruction only within their area, areas of knowledge and competent competence and shall be knowledgeable about current best practices. Bobby Roberts and Sherry Duffy commented that they support subsection B. Subsection C is what I was initially reading out loud, that we had several recommendations to renew, to remove the first sentence in section, subsection C. The relationship of a social work educator to their students is comparable to that of a social worker to their client. That recommendation was made by Maggie Bridges, Bobby Roberts, Sherry Duffy, Tracy Lilly, Paula Davis, Sarah Backstrom, Elizabeth Rutan, Sarah Bankston, Leslie Green, Tamika Boyer, Asia Dejas, Rebecca Spears, and Denise Chassot. About subsection A, B, or C. There are no hands raised. There's only comments and agreement in the chat, but they haven't raised their hands. Oh, Shelley Weaver has raised her hand.
Hi all, thank you for unmuting me and taking public comment. I just wanted to share my support of the public comments read. I do feel also there's, the nature of the relationship between a student and a university is very different than the client social work relationship. And I appreciated the insight that was given about when it's encouraged from the university of social events, sporting events, or group dinners. That's very different than with the client. So I think that was helpful, and I just wanted to share my support. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. Subsection D of section 125, Bobby Roberts and Sherry Duffy submitted a comment supporting the language in the notice of intent. Is there any other public comment on section 125 subsection D? No. All right. The next chapter is chapter three, general provisions. And we are going to be defining social work educator. And we had comments from our educators that, that I've read the list of already. Bobby Roberts, Sherry Duffy, Tracy Lilly, Paula Davis, Sarah Backstrom, Elizabeth Rutan, Sarah Bankston, Leslie Green, Tamika Boyer, Asia Dejas, Rebecca Spears, Denise Chassot. All commenters recommend adding language to include volunteering professional services so that the definition of social work educator includes social work field supervisors who are voluntarily supervising students in the field, however not formally contracted or employed by the educational institution. All right, so Bobby Roberts and Sherry Duffy's specific comment, social work educator. This should also include social work field supervisors who are voluntarily supervising students in the field, however not formally contracted or employed by the educational institution. And then the group submission from Tracy Lilly regarding the definition reads, definition of social work educator suggested change is to include field supervisor. Suggested language, social work educator, an individual employed by, in contract, or volunteering professional services within educational institution's social work program for the purpose of educating social work students and who holds a registration, certification, or license in the field of social work. This change supports the ethical values highlighted in NASW Code of Ethics, section 5.01, to promote the integrity of the professional and information to advance the values of the professional and promote competency. Throughout the CSWE community, field supervisors are considered field and are practicum educators and do it without being compensated. They are considered instructors for the university regardless of having a contract or being employed by the university. Are there any other public comments related to the definition of social work educator? No comments.
Any comments on section 301, on any of the definitions?
No hands raised.
Okay, so section 305, I believe we've received no written comments. Are there any public comments to be made at this time?
No.
Okay. Moving on to section 307. Group, you might just want to call into LSU School of Social Work. Might be easier than reading all the names.
That will be easier. Okay, for 307, we did receive public comments supporting, supportive of continuing the board's practice of early testing for students in their final semester before graduation. That was submitted by LSU School of Social Work. But I do read it. That's pretty much what it said. Supportive of continued earlier testing in student final semester before graduation.
Okay.
Are there any other public comments about section 307?
Uh, there's a hand raised by Grace.
Thank you for this. I want to find out from you why we have RSW and CSWs. And here we are mentioning about CSWs. So what is the difference with the RSW and CSWs? Because they've all done the same number of years. But some are qualified as RSWs and some are CSWs.
What specific language in section 307 are you questioning?
I'm talking on, um, section 305, A, uh, C, yeah, section I'm talking on section 305A, C, yeah, section 305, qualifications for registration, certifications, licensing.
So the section 305,
Yes ma'am.
...of intent is recommending changes to CSW to support the Practice Act change that removed the testing requirements of six months and one year for CSWs.
Okay, but, but my thing is, there's no mention of RSWs. So why, what happens to RSWs?
There's no, I'm sorry, there's no mention of RSWs because they're not recommending any changes to what the current language in the rules reads.
Okay, not recommending the current language. But I'm concerned because some are qualified as RSWs and CSWs. So it is questionable to me. So why, why is, why is it so different? This, this CSW would go the same with RSWs, am I right? If they were, if they were all ranked as same.
That's, that's what the law, right? That's the difference between them.
Because I'm sure that the law will be abiding to RSW and CSWs. And a CSW is, I don't know the difference because CSW, RSW, it's, it's, I see one is inferior to the other.
She wants to email the board office. I'll be happy to respond to that.
Right, since your question is not directed toward the rule, if you want to email the board office, they can send you the information, but the designations are set forth by the law and this rule doesn't do anything to change what the law is.
Yes ma'am, I, I do understand what you're saying. But I'm saying that you may, you know, you may take a look into this and, and see how it can affect, because even if the, if the wordings don't affect them, there is a problem because these are two people under one, 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 one head, but they are separated and one is given a different option or a different, uh, 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 we had a description from the other, but they always did the same thing.
Right, so, right. The, the rule that we're addressing is about testing and, and early testing. So I understand that you have some questions that you need clarification to, but if you could email those questions to the board office, they will be able to respond to them so that we can go forward and address the rest of the rules.
I appreciate that ma'am. Can I have the email address to, to contact?
Email address.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, so no other comments on 307?
Yeah.
Okay, so then the next item that we, is section 309 amendments, and there were some written comments received on 309.
The, so the LSU School of Social Work submitted a comment that they are supportive of having temporary social work practice permit for 90 days to provide time for new graduates to apply and be able to start working per the designated level of social work credential consistent with submitted application to allow for easier transition from school to employment. 309 are yeah, are rules in reference to
You have the
are rules in reference to procedures for applications of military-trained applicants or spouses of military personnel, issuance of temporary practice permits, and priority processing of applications. So that section is in reference to military applicants and spouses and there's no substantive change with that. The language was revised for ease of reading. Are there any other public comments about section 309 application procedure?
No raise.
So section 311, there were no pub, written public comments received. Are there any public comments to be made at this time? All right, section 313 relative to fees, there were public comments received on 313.
LSU School of Social Work. Concerned that increased amount might be a hardship for new social workers as they also have testing costs interested in understanding the need for increase. Okay, so the proposed amendment to section 313 increases the annual license renewal fees to $100 for LCSW RSWs. There's not been a fee increase in over 25 years. The board's revenue is self-generated through the fees charged and does not, we do not receive any state or federal assistance. An increase in revenue allows the board to invest in improving its technology, equipment, and services, as well as employing people to conduct the board's business in an efficient manner.
Any others?
Are there any other comments regarding section 313?
Galen Bond.
Galen, you'll need to unmute.
I'm just in support of the increase in the fees so that we can move forward with our office and the services we can provide. About time for us to do it. So it's, we can speak for support for some of these, even if we're not uh, those are our issues. Is that correct?
That's correct. You can say that you're in support or not in support, or write in a comment. Thank you for your comment.
Okay.
Any others?
That was the only one.
Okay, section 317 on continuing education requirements is being replaced by chapter 13, so we'll address continuing education with chapter 13. So section 325, which is inactive status, there were some written comments received.
And before that, 319 reciprocity and endorsement. We did not receive any written public comments. Do we have any comments today regarding section 319 reciprocity endorsement?
Yeah.
Section 325 inactive status. We had a comment from Deana Freydy supporting the implementation of inactive status. And then we had a question from Brandon Reeves. Brandon Reeves is requesting clarification of the approved format for obtaining the required 10 hours of continuing education, i.e., is distance learning limited to five hours? I'll go to the, his actual wording. Mr. Reeves asks, "Please define half of the continuing education units required of active social workers in light of the proposed CE rules regarding synchronous and asynchronous distance learning. Specifically, does half mean 10 hours in any format? Or does it maintain the restriction of no more than five hours obtained via asynchronous distance learning?"
Do we say that this is a question? I don't really have answer. We will address it with the board.
Yeah.
So that is a question that we need clarification on. Any other comments on 325?
Bonita LaCour.
Hello, Galen Bond. I just wanted to say I'm very pleased that we have the inactive status. And I think for the very reason we have an inactive status, when the board looks at this, I think we need to look at how we can continue to be supportive when somebody needs to take that time, that the most important thing, rather than seeing, being present face to face, is we have so many options that we need to be open to making this work for a person that is going through a period in their lives where they don't want to lose their licensure and they want to be able to come back and are not putting anybody in, are not practicing in either an inactive or retired status, that they have some flexibility around the continuing ed hours. Just a statement.
Thank you. That was Galen Bond. She was able to unmute. So this is Bunny, Bonita.
Okay.
Oh, you'll need to unmute. Oh, where did she go?
I've, the second time I'm unmuted. Can
I muted her. Okay, her hand went down. So that, that was the only one.
Okay, so section 327 is emeritus status. And there were public comments received regarding subsection C.
Yes, so Deana Freydy submitted a comment that she supports implementation of emeritus status. We had some commenters for subsection C related to the approved format for obtaining the required 10 hours of continuing education. The first comment is from from Will Francis. "Section C states that a social worker on emeritus status must complete half of the continuing education units required of active social workers. Chapter 13, 1313 authorizes up to 10 hours of asynchronous distance or virtual learning and classifies synchronous interactive webinars as in-person. Can the LABSWE clarify as to whether this means that a social worker with emeritus status must complete five synchronous in-person CEU hours and may obtain the remaining five hours through asynchronous distance learning? Explicit language on this breakdown would be helpful." We have another written public comment from Brandon Reeves. And he also had a written comment on the inactive status. It's kind of the same question. Does half of the continuing education units mean 10 hours in any format? Or does it maintain the restriction of no more than five hours via asynchronous learning? Given that emer, that emeritus status, excuse me, that emeritus social workers do not actively practice, I suggest allowing them to complete all 10 hours through any method since they are not engaged in direct client work. The delivery method of continuing education is less critical. And we also had a comment from Shelley Weaver regarding this section. "Section C states that a social worker on emeritus status must complete half of the continuing education units required of active social workers. Given that chapter 13, 1313 authorizes up to 10 hours of asynchronous distance or virtual learning and classifies synchronous interactive webinars as in-person hours, does this mean that a social worker with emeritus status must complete five synchronous in-person CEU hours and may obtain the remaining five hours through asynchronous distance learning? Clarification on this breakdown would be helpful." This, this, these questions will be presented to the board for the board to respond. Are there any other public comments related to subsection, section 327?
Bonita LaCour.
Hi, can you hear me now? Can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Can you hear us?
Yes, I'm sorry. Apologize for earlier, I had some privacy settings issue. So I would like to concur with what already was stated with inactive as well as emeritus regarding needing clarification for continuing ed of distance versus in-person. But I would also add regarding the ethics requirements. We are currently for active status, we're, we're required to have three hours every, was it two years? So does that mean one and a half hours every two years? Since it would be one half. And the same goes to, to clarify regarding the number of hours for clinical, you know, versus general. So I would agree with what already has been stated. They need a little more clarification regarding the continuing education requirements for the inactive as well as the emeritus status. Otherwise, I would agree and concur wholeheartedly with the idea of having both of these, these options. That's a great idea.
Thank you. Any other comments?
That was it. Oh, wait, Galen Bond.
Okay.
Lowered her hand.
Okay. That concludes the changes to chapter three. Moving on to chapter five. The first section that was amended was section 503, and there were no written public comments received. Do we have anybody wishing to comment on that today?
Galen Bond.
Okay.
Am I unmuted? Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, well, certainly back what previous people have said on the two statuses. And I really think that I'd want to also just say thank you for finally, now in 2025, we have both of these statuses for our social workers. And in getting them, we're looking at how life happens to all of us as we age and as things happen in life, that we now have the status that I would like for us to consider with. have the status that I would like for us to consider whenever it goes to the board, that we make this as flexible as we can, because these are statuses where people will not be doing clinical work. And so I throw that out there, and I'm very proud that y'all have moved forward and given options. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So on section 505, do we have any, 503, do we have any public comments? We didn't receive any written comments.
There are no hands raised.
Okay, so section 505, we have no written comments. Do we have any public comments to be made today on section 505?
There are no hands raised.
Okay, next is section 509 on telesupervision, and we did receive some written public comments on section 509.
We had a public, written public comment for subsection B. This needs clarification. Social workers engaging in electronic practice who provide services to clients in Louisiana shall be licensed to practice in Louisiana. Social workers who are licensed to practice in jurisdictions other than Louisiana and are and/or who are pursuing clinical licensure in another state shall be licensed to practice in Louisiana to engage in telesupervision. Social workers shall be actively engaged in the practice of social work in Louisiana to receive telesupervision. The supervisor shall be a Louisiana licensed supervisor. The highlighted section is not worded clearly, and the meaning is therefore unclear. A section that was highlighted is the part shall be licensed to practice in Louisiana to engage in telesupervision. Do we have any other comments about subsection B? There are no raised hands. Okay, I think the next subsection that we had comments on is subsection D1. Complete 1.5 hours of continuing education in telesupervision/telepractice. This is a one-time requirement. Documentation of completion shall be filed with the board. Do the hour supervision and telepractice, or can it be in either of these, but does not have to be both? It's CEUs in telehealth, but I have never seen any specifically for telesupervision. However, it makes more sense to require telesupervision hours for BACS rather than telehealth practice, as telehealth practice pertains to clients and interventions, not supervision. We had other public comments regarding D1 from Will Francis, Gina Rossi, Heather Prejean, Brandon Reeves, Shelley Weaver, and LSU School of Social Work. So feel, give me your patience while I go through each of these. I appreciate it. NASW Louisiana suggests amending this to clarify which credentialed social workers in the supervisory relationship must complete this CEU requirement. As currently written, it is unclear whether the training is required for the LCSW BACS, the LMSW, or both. Explicitly stating this would eliminate ambiguity. The next part of his public comment is a recommendation. Next, Gina Rossi's comment. Please clarify which specific licensed social workers must complete 1.5 hours of continuing education in telesupervision/telepractice. This is a one-time requirement. Documentation of completion shall be filed with the board. Previous requirements for decades regarding supervision only require training by the BACS. It will be helpful to the social work community to have clear listing as to which specific licenses applies to. I recommend the rule clearly spell out LMSW and LCSW if that is your intent. However, due to increasing use of technology, there are more situations of social workers not licensed engaging in a telesupervisory relationship, telesupervision not for licensure, with another social worker not licensed. This rule, as it is written, does not protect the public as it excludes requirements for training, security, et cetera, for those who are not licensed. If this is not the board's intent, then I recommend them to list out specifically which specific social work level this applies to. I recommend the rule state any social worker engaging in a telesupervision relationship, regardless if the purpose is supervision or not, must complete 1.5 hours of continuing training. Please clarify 1.5 hours of continuing education in telesupervision/telepractice. This is a one-time event. How recent does the first continuing education have to have occurred? Specifically, many social workers took training about this topic during the pandemic. Will it be accepted if the continuing education on this topic was within the last three to five years? If yes, I recommend the rule state documented training must have been completed since January 2020. This clarifies for social workers that training on this topic completed, and that time will not be denied in some future board meeting. All right, Heather Prejean is the next commenter on this section. Her comment is, does the licensed social worker include both BACS and LMSW or only BACS? Next comment for this section is from Brandon Reeves. Please clarify the descriptor, licensed social workers who engage in telesupervision as it relates to the 1.5-hour telesupervision/telepractice CE requirement. Is this requirement for the supervisor, the supervisee, or both? Will these 1.5 hours count toward the three-hour BACS renewal requirement? Does this training in either telesupervision or telepractice, does, excuse me, does training in either telesupervision or telepractice qualify? Or must the training explicitly cover telesupervision? The use of the slash suggests that either is acceptable. Complete, please confirm if this is the intent. Shelley Weaver submitted a comment about 509D1 and the 1.5 hour of continuing education. I suggest amending this to clarify which credentialed social workers in the supervisory relationship must complete this CEU requirement. Is it required for the LCSW BACS, the LMSW, or both? Additionally, for LMSWs who are not receiving BACS supervision, or CSWs who are not eligible for BACS supervision under 505, would they also be required along with their LCSW supervisor to complete these CEU hours, explicitly stating this would eliminate ambiguity? Then she has a side note with a recommendation as we move forward with covalent. LSU School of Social Work. Supportive of required training in telesupervision theories, ethical considerations, and best practices to provide telesupervision. Are there any other public comments regarding 509? D1.
Comments were received on section 509D3.
We have three comments on subsection D3. NASW, this is from Will Francis. NASW LA would like to share an example of how this applies in practice. At the organization where one of our LCSW BACS board members works, they recently amended their consent agreements to include language similar to the proposed rule when obtaining informed consent for treatment. This works well for a supervision contract type one, where the member serves as both the LCSW BACS and the agency supervisor for the LMSW. However, they have an LMSW in supervision with both types of contracts. The LMSW is employed part-time at their hospice organization, supervision contract one, where the organization obtains written informed consent. The LMSW is also employed full-time as a school social worker, supervision contract two. While the LCSW BACS completes quarterly onsite visits to maintain a professional relationship with the LMSW under supervision principle, the nature of work often involves responding to crisis situations where students may not yet be on the LMSW's caseload. These cases are crucial to review and supervision. However, as currently written, this rule would exclude these cases from discussion unless the meeting is held in person. This could negatively impact the quality of care, the LMSW's professional development, and the overall effectiveness of supervision. NASW LA encourages the consideration of a support for ethical and appropriate supervision of such cases in a telesupervision setting. The next comment regarding 509D3 is from Gina Rossi. D3 continues under the heading of licensed social workers shall ensure that clients whose records may be discussed as part, as a part of supervision, provide written informed consent to having confidential records and information transmitted electronically in accordance with HIPAA. In the real world, many LMSWs in telesupervision relationships is it intended that the supervising that the LMSW needs to discuss this case for supervision? As discussed previously above, there may be social workers not licensed who may be engaging in telesupervision with another social worker. It is possible in a remote and virtual environment, they are meeting or discussing over phone or Zoom. If this rule is to protect the public, then it is recommended that it be changed to state any social worker, not just licensed social workers. Brandon Reeves also commented on 509D3. Please clarify this, this section applies to records rather than general client interactions or discussions in supervision. Under HIPAA, formal client records must be protected, but supervisory discussions about a client do not necessarily require the same level of consent. HIPAA permits disclosure of PHI for education and training as long as the minimum necessary standard 45 CFR 164.502B is met. Please confirm whether this aligns with LABSWE's interpretation. Are there any other comments about 509 subsection D3?
Next set of changes is to 509 subsection D6, and there were written comments received regarding section six.
Bobby Roberts and Sheri Duffy. Ensure, this needs clarification. Ensure continuity, consistency, and form, format of supervision delivery are clearly outlined in the written supervision contract. The supervision contract shall indicate the format of delivery and safeguards for the supervision process. Is this referring to the written supervision contract in certum? If so, the supervisor does not write this, but agrees to and signs. Or are you requiring an additional supervision contract? If so, is this submitted to the board or simply kept between the supervisee and supervisor? There has not previously been a requirement for an additional supervision contract other than the one in certum. Thus, this is confusing. Also, this statement does not clarify if a blended format of supervision is permissible, for example, meeting both in-person and online at different times to accommodate schedules, travel, illnesses, et cetera. All right, other commenters for this section?
I wasn't sure if Charles Lee's is a public comment or a recommendation. I wasn't sure if Charles Lee's is a public comment or a recommendation. So you want me just to read it to be on the safe side?
Okay, Charles Lee. I am writing for the purpose of obtaining clarification of proposed rule 509 D, section D6. I currently provide weekly in-person face-to-face supervision to several LMSWs seeking the LCSW credential. Each has an existing supervision contract. From time to time, it would be beneficial to be able to provide telesupervision in addition to in-person supervision in order to ensure the continuity and consistency of the supervision process. As there is no ability to amend and resubmit an existing supervision contract, is it possible for the occasional use of telesupervision that complies with the rules of this section be allowed for existing supervision by notifying the board in writing of the relevant information? Or under the proposed rule, would each existing supervisee be required to contact the board in order to have a new supervision contract added to their certum account so that a new contract can be submitted to simply add for the possibility of telesupervision? In any case, the record of supervision would note whether a supervision session was conducted in-person or via telesupervision. I fully realize that the use of telesupervision is required to be documented on any new supervision contract when first beginning the supervision process. Thank you for taking the time to consider this question and for helping make the supervision process more accessible. All right, next comment is from Brandon Reeves. Okay, Mr. Reeves' comment regarding 509 D6 is really a recommendation for the new platform asking that the board ensure that supervision contracts allow for a combination of in-person and telesupervision without requiring a new contract each time the method changes. This flexibility is important for supervisor and supervisees. While I can't answer all of the questions that you guys are asking, I can say that our supervision contract that we are working on does allow a selection of hybrid, meaning that the person could be doing in-person face-to-face supervision from time to time and telesupervision from time to time. So there will be that method to check, so there would not be a requirement of a new supervision requirement to switch between in-person and telesupervision. All right, that was the last written comment regarding subsection D6. Does anyone else have a comment? Please raise your hand. There are no hands raised.
Okay, so moving on to chapter seven. Section 701 and 703, no public comments were received, so maybe we could take those together. Does anyone have a comment on 701 or 703?
No.
Okay, so for section 705, there was one comment received.
I have the following comment concerning this portion of the IPP, chapter seven, section three during the monitoring period. The social worker may be required to submit to random drug and/or alcohol screenings as determined appropriate by the RPP manager or other monitoring requirements which are pertinent and relative to the documented impairment. A, the interval, timing, and details of the required screening will be directed by the RPP manager. I believe there should be an oversight function built into this rule. For example, many moons ago, I had a LCSW come to me who had voluntarily reported herself as having an alcohol addiction. She had successfully completed treatment and was sober when she reported herself to the IPP. The person responsible for all decisions about what records were pertinent for review, timeframe for monitoring, et cetera, seemed to use her position in an unfettered manner with no ability for the LCSW to appeal any decision that she found onerous and irrelevant to her current situation of remaining sober. Example, previous childhood therapy records that were voluminous and very private to the LCSW. She explained to the IPP person that back then she did not even discuss drinking. It was not until her contracted and contentious divorce that she discussed her own drinking in her individual therapy and IOP treatment as an unhealthy way of coping. The LCSW was fine with sharing those records with the IPP, but resisted release of the early childhood records from long ago that she wanted to keep confidential. The IPP insisted purportedly saying something like, "I get paid to review any of your records I want, and the longer the better because I get paid by the hour." As one might imagine, that only infuriated her, and she came to me. There needs to be someone or the board in toto available for oversight, review, request by participants, in my humble opinion.
Any other comments about section? Chapter nine of the current rules is being moved to chapters 10 and 11. The way the register requires us to report it, it says repeal, but actually some of the processes in there are moved to chapter 10 and 11. So we can then move to chapter 10. And for sections 1002, 1004, 1006, there were no written public comments received. So do we have any public comments today on either of those sections?
Deb Henson has her hand raised.
Okay.
Let's see if you can hear me now. Are you able to? Can you hear me now? Yes? You can, can you hear me now?
Can you hear us?
I can hear you, you can't hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh, good, good, good. So I was just gonna say, what happened to chapter seven?
We just went through chapter seven.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you read my comments about the oversight?
I did.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay, that's fine, never mind, go ahead. My bad.
No problem. So any comments on the sections 1002, four, or six?
No comments.
Okay. Then 1008, duty to maintain contact information. We did have one comment written?
Yes. I received a written comment from Brandon Reeves on this section. Okay, 1008 dot B, complaint notification via email. This section allows complaints against licensees to be sent only via email. While email is generally reliable, it is not foolproof. For example, spam filters and correct addresses. Recommendation would be to require a dual notice system, email plus certified mail, or require the licensee to acknowledge receipt before proceeding. Are there any other comments regarding that subsection?
There are no hands raised.
Oh, Deb Henson.
I, I would like to support that that you either do a certified mail duplicate notice, or I think it would be easier and less expensive to require a receipt of that acknowledgement from the licensee. Mainly because I have had several situations where an email went to the wrong email, and I know that's the licensee's responsibility, change their email with the board. But because it's so important that they receive this, I think it would be a good idea to institute a receipt of of the complaint by the licensee, just to make sure it got there, didn't go to the spam folder or whatever.
There are no other comments.
So the next section is 1010, no comments were received in writing. Do we have any public comments today?
There are no raised hands.
Okay, also, no public comments were received on 1012. Do we have any comments today?
There are no raised hands.
Okay, we did receive one comment on section 1014.
Deb Henson is supportive of section 1014. Prerequisites for institution of administrative proceedings showing of compliance. Section, subsection A, at any point before an administrative complaint is filed with the board, the administrator shall notify the respondent of the nature of the potential charges against the respondent and permit the respondent to provide a response within 30 calendar days. Question, are you returning to the 30-day response deadline? Recently, your letters to licensees have asked for the response to be submitted within 15 days. I certainly prefer the 30-day response time.
So yes, it would be 30 days if the rule is fully promulgated for response time. Okay, so that, any other comments about section 1014?
No.
Then on sections 1016, 18, 20, 22, 24, 26, and 28, 30, 32, all the way through the end of this chapter 10, there were no written public comments. So do we have any comments today on any other provision in chapter 10?
There are no hands raised.
I just want to clarify that when the notice of intent was originally submitted, the section numbers were even numbers, and the register asked us about making them odd numbers. So a lot of the comments were submitted with the even numbers because that both both the even numbering and the odd numbering were posted on the website. So just so you're not confused, what was published were use of odd number, so they were just adjusted. But the content did not change, so. Going on to chapter 11, there was one written comment on section 1101, compliance hearing purpose, scope, and burden of proof.
Okay, we had a question submitted by Brandon Reeves. As written, this section only applies to the denial of an application for a credential or renewal. Does this exclude other compliance hearings, for example, appeals for denied telesupervision requests? If so, should this section be expanded to cover all board decisions that impact a licensee?
Do you want me, do we give our explanation?
Okay.
So am I correct in saying that the Administrative Procedure Act requires a hearing if an application is denied?
Correct. The Administrative Procedures Act requires a hearing or some, either informal or hearing if an, if an application is denied or if a licensee's renewal is denied. So anything that, the compliance hearings that are conducted, the board has expanded that because the telesupervision or the supervision requirements relate to whether or not the the application can be approved. Because if you don't have the requisite number of supervision hours, for example, then that's going to impact your ability to get the license on a full application. So it's all related, we believe.
There any other comments regarding 1101?
There are no hands raised.
Okay, so there were no public comments on 1103, 1105, 1107, or 1109? Do we have any comments today on any of those sections?
There are no hands raised.
We did receive one comment from Deborah Henson on 1111, compliance hearing decisions.
Subsection E, the pronouncing that right? Ombong panel will have 30 calendar days from submission of the appeal to render a decision on the appeal. The decision shall be in writing and shall be transmitted to the applicant or licensee in the same manner as the original decision on the compliance hearing. I believe there should be a subsection F setting forth the process and time deadlines for appealing the ombong decision to the district court.
So the time to appeal, just as way of explanation, the ombong decision to the district court is dictated by law, and that's in the Administrative Procedures Act. So we can't change that by rule. So for sections, do we have any other comments?
Deb Henson?
Okay.
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify that that was actually section 1113 and not 1111.
Okay.
Which I guess you get figured out because the quote was from 1113. But even if you, I'm not asking you to change it, but just because this is a section that talks about licensees' options for appeal, I think it would be helpful to have a subsection F just reiterating what the deadline is, so that it's all here, and you know, all the appeal process is here in this one rule. It wouldn't be changing anything, it would just maybe be a duplication of the other, but I think it would be clearer for people to see when they're considering an administrative hearing, like what happens if, you know, they don't rule in my favor, how can I appeal? And it would go through the entire appeal process.
Okay, thank you. So that really goes to 1103. And 1103, there's actually just A through D. So I think the suggestion is to add a section E to 1103 rather than F.
She raised her hand again.
It's 1113.
1113, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's 1113.
Okay, so 1113.
Yeah.
Corrected on our notes. Thank you, and then for 1113, other than that one comment, we didn't receive any other written comments? Or did we receive any written comments on 1115 or 1117? Do we have any other comments on 1113 or comments on 1115 or 17?
No.
Okay, so without any comments there, the next chapter, which we have revisions, is chapter 13 on continuing education requirements. So we did not receive any written public comments on 1301. Do we have any comments on 1301? For 1303, which is continued education approval organizations, we did receive written comments on several of the sections, starting with subsection starting with subsection H.
Okay, this comment was submitted by Will Francis. The rule states, "The board may audit any continuing educational approval organization by requiring the organization to submit documentation to the board on all programs the organization approved in a collection year. NASW LA would like to suggest adding a clarification specifying how long organizations must retain these records for audit purposes, similar to the requirement outlined in 1309B for licensees." This, this subsection also had a written comment from Shelley Weaver. Shelley Weaver, "I suggest adding a clarification specifying how long organizations must retain these records for audit purposes, similar to the requirement outlined in 1309B for licensees."
Do we have any other comments regarding this section?
No, there are no hands raised.
Okay. We also received comments on subsection I.
LSU School of Social Work requests for clarification in public hearing, the reason for the application fee for approving organizations and the purpose of this fee. Okay. Well, in response to an explanation, I would offer the following, that there are administrative costs to process the approvals and to audit, monitor organizations to ensure compliance with their requirements or their agreement to be an approval organization. We plan to integrate the approval organizations with the website, which will also result in administrative costs because as the board approves new organizations or renew someone's organization's status, we will have to request a change to the website. And the board is charged for those changes.
Do we have any other comments on section 1303I?
There are no other comments.
Okay. We also received written comments on section 1305, the criteria for approval of continuing education offerings.
LSU School of Social Work supports the language to clarify that in-person and synchronous interactive webinars are considered face-to-face. This language is consistent with other state laws.
Do we have any other comments today on section A1? Okay. For section A3, we also received written comments.
I would like to share some, oh, I'm sorry. This, this written comment is from Jessica Hector. "I would like to share some thoughts on why I believe we should not have to have 10 in-person CEUs accessibility. In 2025, with so much online accessibility, even the board meets online, it doesn't make sense to require in-person CEUs. This is a burden hardship on people with disabilities. As social workers, we should be making services more accessible. Also, with the Interstate Compact in the works, it makes no sense to have people doing in-person CEUs. Costs time. We can complete online trainings at our convenience online. Having to go to in-person trainings often cuts into working hours, meaning that we lose income, which is another hardship. Lack of appropriate diverse in-person CEUs. I am a highly-trained trauma therapist, so I can't find local CEUs to further my career in this area. So I end up studying in my interest area and then having to spend extra time and money just to meet the in-person CEU requirements. So for other therapists who specialize in a particular area, I would think they have a similar struggle. Therapists have to scramble to get in-person CEUs, take whatever is available, whether or not they are interested, and fear not having enough in-person CEUs due to lack of offerings that coincide with therapist's schedule illness. Since the rise of COVID and possibility of other airborne illnesses, it feels dangerous, short-sighted, to make people gather in a room if they feel safer meeting online. Again, this is not putting people's need for safety first. Please discontinue requiring in-person CEUs. It is an antiquated requirement that makes no sense in current times. It is more of a hardship than a benefit."
Okay. Any other comments on section 1305A3?
Galen Bond?
I'm mute. I want to say, I never thought I would say this. I really agree that we need the flexibility in terms of face-to-face. And I feel like that the comments that were made earlier have a good merit for us to consider that times have changed and people are into their own specialties. And a lot of times, those face-to-face are not available, but they are through PSE and other groups. And you can also do some modifications. So I hope we'll really look at this. Because of COVID, because of issue wage, sometimes being in these face-to-face, you feel like you're putting yourself in danger. People coughing, people all around you. So just would ask that we look at this closely as to the need now and today in 2025. Thank you.
I see this as a recommendation to the board to remove limitations to distance learning, period. I will say, as far as addressing people's health or disability, the allowing for the in-person, I mean, excuse me, the live webinars to count as in-person continuing education, I feel does adequately address that concern.
There are no hands raised.
Lisa Goings?
Good afternoon. Thank you, Board, for, for hearing me. I would like to agree with what the two commenters just said. I am one of those people that I could not take the COVID vaccination because I was allergic. Actually, all my vaccinations from childhood, I've never had them. And I'm always a little frightened when I go somewhere in person. Now, I actually wear a mask everywhere I go when I go out in, in the, in public. And I also take care of my mom, who's a cancer victim. So it would be, I'm sorry, somebody's trying to call me just a minute. I'm sorry about that. But it would be great if, you know, we were allowed to do that. And I'm assuming we can do 10 of the required 20 hours with asynchronous learning webinars. But in addition to that, there are some wonderful, wonderful trainings available that are not local, that they do offer them through webinars, asynchronous webinars. But to go there and then pay for your airfare and your hotel makes it cost prohibitive. One of the things that I very much appreciated when we were all kind of locked down during COVID is the wonderful training we had access to because everything was going online, basically. And we, my staff, anyway, got to participate in training they would never have been able to participate in. And I think, I think that still stands, you know, from across the country. Even internationally, there are trainings available. So that's all I wanted to say, and I'm sorry I took up so much time.
Thank you for your comment. Do we have any other comments?
No others.
Okay. We also received written comments on section 1307A.
Will Francis submitted a comment. "Clarification is needed regarding how CEU credit is calculated for repeat presentations when co-presenters are involved. The current wording states, 'Co-presenters receive 1.5 hours per each hour of presenting as outlined in A2. Repeat presentations qualify for half the credits of the initial presentation. If two co-presenters receive 1.5 hours per hour of presentation in A2, does this mean that for a repeat session, each presenter receives 0.75 hours per hour of presenting? 1.5 hours. Explicit confirmation would be helpful."
We have two more. Okay.
Brandon Reeves, "Repeat presentations qualify for one-half of the credits available for the initial presentation. Does this apply only to repeated presentations within the same year? If it applies to subsequent years, is there a limit on how many times a presentation can earn credit without significant revision?" Shelley Weaver asks, "Clarification is needed regarding how CEU credit is calculated for repeat presentations when co-presenters are involved. The current wording states, 'Co-presenters receive 1.5 hours per each hour of presenting as outlined in A2. Repeat presentations qualify for half the credits of the initial presentation. If two co-presenters receive 1.5 hours per hour of presentation in A2, does this mean that for a repeat session, each presenter receives 0.75 hours per hour of presenting? Explicit confirmation would be helpful."
Any other comments on that section?
No, there's no hands raised.
Okay. We also received a written public comment on subsection B2, which is also about repeat courses. I think you read it before. How many times can you repeat the course? Reads, "Repeat courses taught qualify for one-half of the credits available for the initial course taught, unless the material has been substantially changed or updated."
Brandon Reeves asks, "Same clarification needed as above regarding repeated coursework presentations."
Okay. Any other public comments on section 1307B2?
No.
Moving on to the next section, 1309 Audit. There were no written public comments received. Do we have anybody wishing to comment on section 1309?
There are no raised hands.
Okay. So for section 1311, the collection period, written public comments were received on subsection B.
1311, subsection B, we received a comment from LSU School of Social Work supporting the carryover of 10 surplus hours of CEUs to next collection period.
Do we have any other comments on subsections A or B to 1311?
No.
Moving on to subsection C. We did receive public comments on subsection C.
LSU School of Social Work says, "Support clarifying the language of even-numbered years for ethics and backs, as this has often caused confusion."
Any other public comments on subsection C to 1311?
No comments.
Okay. On subsection 1313, distance or virtual learning limit, there was one written public comment received?
Nita Balcom says, "I would like to register for the public comment. My specific comment relates to synchronous interactive learning as explicated below. Chapter 13 is enacted to revise continuing education requirements. Section 1311 is enacted to change the collection period for continuing education hours and to authorize up to 10 hours of continuing education to carry over to the next collection period. Section 1313 is enacted to authorize up to 10 hours of asynchronous distance or virtual learning or teaching and clarifies that synchronous interactive webinars are in-person. Section 1315 is enacted to prorate the number of required continuing education hours for the initial year of credential. My comment is a request that the synchronous interactive learning be approved as in-person hours due to the immense hardship social workers have experienced in the past year in attempting to find any in-person contact hours and even more difficulty experienced in finding something locally. I have had people share with me that they have had to drive several hours in order to attend in-person offerings. I would also like to request that if the revision is approved, that the process is expedited."
Okay. Do we have anybody wishing to make a comment on section 1313?
There are no hands raised.
Okay. On section 1315, which we just touched upon, prorated continuing education for the initial year of credentialing, there was a comment received on subsection A.
Brandon Reeves asks, "How does the prorating of CE hours for new licensees affect specialty hour requirements? For example, clinical hours and asynchronous learning limits." For example, if a licensee is only required to complete 10 hours of CE due to prorating, can all 10 hours be asynchronous? Or is the rule that no more than half of the total required hours, example, five of 10, may be asynchronous? If the internet, I mean, excuse me, if the intent is to maintain the 50% limit, this should be explicitly stated in all sections where CE hour requirements are adjusted.
Do we have any additional comments on section 1315?
No.
And then on the last section? And then on the last section, 1317, we received no written comments. Do we have anybody that wishes to comment on section 1317?
There are no raised hands.
Okay. So that concludes the public hearing. As we said at the beginning of the public hearing, this was, you know, the board is not present today, so we're gathering the public comments, and the board will have to take into consideration any comments that might require revision or amendment to the rules as they were published. And thank you, everyone, for your comments because they are very helpful to us. Yes, thank you very much.